Good evening. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, January 8th, 2018 will please come to order. I will call the roll. Eric Brown?
Here.
Linda Cohen?
Here.
Andrea Keen?
Here.
Sarah Johansson?
Here.
Anita Lucky?
Here.
Chris McCullough?
Here.
Cheryl Polzin?
Here.
Chase Anderson? Here. The first order of business this evening is to affirm the oath of office to re-elected school board members, and to do that, I would ask these three board members, Andrea Keen, Sarah Johansson, and Chris McCullough, to please join me at the podium. Yes, we have to get in the right order.[154.54][154.54](Laughter). On November 7th, 2017, the Wayzata Public School District Community re-elected the following individuals to the Wayzata School District Board of Education: Andrea Keen, Sarah Johansson, and Chris McCullough. It's an honor to be elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of the school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the school district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for our public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, you must be accountable to the community, you must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of our students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, you must strive to work together and with the staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision you have created: fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby request that you now publicly affirm your commitment to the oath of office.
I affirm that I, Andrea Keen, will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully to the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District Number 284, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I affirm that I, Sarah Johansson, will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the school board member of Independent School District Number 284, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I affirm that I, Chris McCullough, will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District Number 284, to the best of my judgment and ability.
And with that action, that affirms these three individuals as school board members for Wayzata Public Schools. Please join me in welcoming and congratulating them.[348.93][348.93](Applause). Of course, I should have said on their behalf to welcome them back for four more years. Thank you. As you may have gathered, this is not our traditional start to a meeting, so bear with us. The next item we have on tonight's agenda is the election of our school board officers. At the December 4, 2017, School Board Special Work Session, the board reviewed its officer slate. Individual board members indicated their interest in serving as officers for 2018, and a proposed slate of officers for 2018 was created. With that, we will now call for the election of school board chair, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer. And I will begin by asking for a nomination and motion for school board chair. Yes, Ms. Cohen?
I would like to nominate Sarah Johansson as chair of the school board, and I so move.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Keen. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Sarah Johansson is our new school board chair. If you'll bear with me for one more minute. I'd like to also call for nomination and motion for the school board vice chair at this time. Yes, Ms. Lucky?
I would like to make a motion and nominate Andrea Keen for vice chair.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries, and Andrea Keen is our new school board vice chair. Next, I'd call for nomination for school board clerk. Yes, Ms. Keen?
I nominate Cheryl Polzin to be the treasurer, and I so move.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Be the clerk?
Clerk.
Sorry. I meant clerk.
To be the clerk, okay.[518.29][518.29](Laughter) We have a motion for Ms. Polzin to be the school board clerk. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Ms. Polzin, you are our school board clerk. And finally, is there a nomination motion for school board treasurer?
I would like to make a motion and nominate Eric Brown for treasurer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lucky. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries, and Eric Brown is our new school board treasurer. So with that, I would like to congratulate our 2018 school board officers, and I'm going to switch places with Ms. Johansson, our new school board chair, and would like to congratulate her and wish her best of luck.
Thank you.
Look at that. That was a fabulous first move.[598.29][598.29](Laughter).
Well, thank you, everyone, and thank you to my colleagues for the election, and I would like to first take one more minute to also acknowledge Mr. McCullough. Director McCullough, the past two years have been pretty eventful in our district, as seems to be the norm, not the exception, and I think I can speak for my board colleagues when I say that we really appreciate his steadfast leadership and commitment to the district, both as our board chair, our board colleague, and as a parent in the district. So please join me in congratulating Chris as well.[640.85][640.85](Applause). And also, congratulations, thank you to Andrea and Cheryl for serving last year, and congratulations as well to my colleagues. So with that, we get to resume our regular meeting, and the first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. And the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the materials, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, we need a roll call for this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I would love to. Eric Brown?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Andrea Keen?
Yes.
Anita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. And Chair Johansson?
Yes.
All right?
All right, and the motion carries. We have an agenda, and the first item on our agenda is a really important part of our meeting, and that is reports from organizations. And so, I see Grant here. Would you want to come up?
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. If you haven't seen me before, I'm Grant Collins, and I'm the student body vice president of the high school. I'm here to give you guys an update about what has been going on this past month at the high school. So first of all, with general school news, the 2018 Best Public High Schools in America was released, and Wayzata High School was named the best public high school in Minnesota. They're based on rigorous analysis of key statistics and millions of reviews from students and parents using data from the U.S. Department of Education. Ranking factors include state test scores, college readiness, graduation rates, SAT and ACT scores, teacher quality, and high school ratings. Additionally, registration for the May AP exams have opened. All students planning on taking an AP exam in May need to register for their exams by March 7th and pay the $65 fee. Our club Y E S has joined with the NFL to coordinate Super Kids Super Sharing. We are all collecting new and gently-used books, games, sports equipment, and cellphones at all Wayzata Public Schools during Super Bowl season. All items donated to Super Kids Super Sharing will go to youth in need in Minnesota school districts. Shades of Brown is holding auditions for this year's February 22nd performance. Auditions will be held after school on January 8th, 9th, and 11th. Shades of Brown is a celebration of cultures through performance that we have at the high school. In student council news, the student council is busy planning the National Student Council Conference, which will be held at our school in June. We have confirmed that one of our keynote speakers will be Kat Perkins, who was a semifinalist on The Voice. We expect almost 1,000 students from across the nation to attend. In the fine arts news, tickets for the winter theater production, Eurydus, are now on sale. Eurydus performs January 18th and 19th at 7:00 PM in Auditorium 2. This production will serve as Wayzata High School's entry for the MSHSL one-act competition. This performance will also feature improv by Stepdad Mike and a preview performance from the upcoming winter musical, Little Shop of Horrors. In athletics and activities news, winter athletics are currently in the middle of their seasons, and the Wayzata Dance Invitational is Saturday, January 20th, in the big gym. This is a big fundraiser, and a variety of schools across the metro compete in the competition. With that, my update is concluded, and I'm welcome to answer any questions that you might have for me.
All right, thank you, Grant. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I have a quick question. You might not know the answer. Is Stepdad Mike the improv club for Wayzata High School, or?
I'm honestly not sure about that. I was wondering that myself, actually.
But someone back there knows.
Oh, right?
Stepdad Mike is an individual group made up of Wayzata High School students that regularly conforms in Wayzata High School events.
Okay. Got it, thanks.
Thank you.
Very fun. Does the high school feel like the best high school in America?
Definitely.
That's a good answer. All right, other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, great. And next, we have superintendent's report and employee recognitions.
Good evening, everybody, and again, welcome to our school board meeting tonight. My name is Chase Anderson. I'm the superintendent for the school district, and it's my honor at each of our regular meetings to do the recognitions portion of our program. And as I look out at our audience here tonight, I realize that almost all of you are here for the recognition portion of the school board meeting. There's a lot of exciting finance and business news on the agenda tonight, but we know that you're here to celebrate and recognize student and staff accomplishments and achievements. So we're so glad that you're here with us tonight. Our first recognition is in regard to those individuals, those staff members, who have announced their retirements since the last regular school board meeting, and if any of these folks are here, feel free to come forward, although oftentimes, they enjoy watching this portion of the program in the comfort of their home. But at any rate, the following folks have indicated their intent to retire, and we wish them well as they move forward into their next chapter. Lori Dornbush, Birchview, paraprofessional, 20 years. Leona Petrius, East Middle, paraprofessional, nine years. Janet Rosted, District Office Secretary, 22 years. Tim Summerfeld, Sunset Hill Custodian, eight years. Colleen Weir, District Office Paraprofessional, 23 years. Doug Winsenberg, Meadow Ridge Custodian, 29 years. Jane Reynolds, Sunset Hill Teacher, 32 years. And Charlene Barghini, Community Education Volunteer Coordinator, 34 years. If you could join me in a round of applause for those (Applause). And I would like to give them a shout-out and a thank you for all of their contributions to the school district. We truly are a product of those people that show up every day to work with our kids and within our community, and they've all made significant contributions to our organization, and their legacies will live on, and we greatly appreciate their many efforts. Our next recognition is for our January Employee of the Month, and I would like to invite Stephanie Weekly, Kimberly Lane Elementary, to please come forward. I'd like to share the following, which was the narrative that was submitted on her behalf for her nominations. Congratulations to Stephanie Weekly for being named the Wayzata Public Schools' January Employee of the Month. Several years ago, Stephanie was a special education teacher at Kimberly Lane, and then stayed home to raise three young children. Fortunately for us, Stephanie joined our special education team again last year as a long-term reserve teacher, and then was hired as a full-time special education teacher at Kimberly Lane this fall. Stephanie stepped into a leadership role in our special education team seamlessly. She manages 10 paraprofessional schedules masterfully, which change daily depending on absences and ever-changing student needs. She does her best to see that all teachers who have our students are supported to the best of their, of her ability. She is constantly thinking of our students and their teachers. She regularly asks anyone with a free moment to check classrooms to make sure all is going well for both the student and the teacher. Teaching, leading, smiling, and laughing, Stephanie makes sure we have the tools we need to ask for, to help us better serve our students. Never have we seen her tired of stepping up, never a sigh or shoulder shrug. She is always positive, supportive, encouraging, and understanding our struggles right along with us. Stephanie regularly expresses her appreciation for colleagues' contributions, which builds morale. She is an awesome team leader whose work positively impacts many students and staff members at Kimberly Lane. Most importantly, Stephanie's students truly like and respect her. She knows them all, has a special relationship with each one of them, and is their tireless advocate.
Thank you so much. This is an incredible honor, but I certainly don't feel like it should be employee of the month, because as a special education teacher, it's a team, and I have a really great team. I have some paraprofessionals that are the glue that hold us together, and a principal who is incredibly supportive, and an entire school of Kimberly Lane that is constantly supporting each other and collaborating, and so I am a very proud teacher of Wayzata Schools, and also a very proud parent who sends her children to Wayzata Schools. So thank you so much.
Our next recognition this evening is in recognition of a recent theater production at the high school, Mary Poppins. And at this time, I'd like to invite Sonya Gerber forward to make a few comments about the students and the play, or the performance, and I'll read a couple of introductory comments, and I have a number of student names on here. I thought it might be fun for you to introduce them and make any other comments that you would like.
Thank you.
So first, let me just share the following. Wayzata High School's production of Mary Poppins and many of the cast and crew were named among the Fall 2016 honorees by Spotlight Education, a program of the Hennepin Theater Trust. This past fall, evaluators assessed the productions of 55 schools and submitted nominations. Shows are not compared or ranked against each other, and categories can have multiple honorees. The musical received outstanding in the categories of achievement in musical theater, overall production, overall performance, ensemble performance, movement, dance performance by an ensemble, student orchestra, overall technical team, technical crew, and light and soundboard operators. The production also received honorable mentions for vocal performance by an ensemble. I don't think there are many categories left after reading through that entire list, but... So I am going to just leave this here with the names of some students and ask Sonya to come to the mic and share whatever you'd like to about the performance.
Hi, I didn't know I was speaking today, so I'm improvising like Stepdad Mike, our improv troupe.[1393.22][1393.22](Laughter). First of all, I want to acknowledge that I actually didn't direct this production, and it was put forward by a team of, I think, about eight adults who comprise our adult staff, everything from lighting design to choreography to directing, which was Grant Sorenson on this production, who's an alum of Wayzata, to music direction, pit conductor, technical director, costume designer. So it really, the adult leadership is just fantastic in the theater program, and back there, you see just a small representation, I think, of some of our student leadership in theater, as well as the many talented and skilled students that we have in the program. The cast was, I think, was it about 40, some 50 this year? 53, and we have a handful of students back there representing that cast. It's a really special honor, and I think really just seeing the students and talking about them. Abby Larson here, who's coming forward, was our stage manager for the production, so she was really the student leader behind the scenes, who called the entire show up from the light booth. We have Katie Mandelfeld, and Maddie Newman, and Alex Denison, and John Moats, and Lance Sorenson, and Kayla, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Kayla, you'll have to say it for me. And they are just some students who received special recognitions this year from the Hennepin Theater Trust, and I hope that they feel really proud. At the end of the year, we get invited, as a result of this, to perform at the State Theater in downtown Minneapolis. We put together a remounted medley of songs from Mary Poppins, and these students also have the opportunity, many of them, to perform in other medleys since they received special nominations. So thank you, guys, for the recognition, and congratulations to you guys as well.[1511.73][1511.73](Applause).
Before we move on to our next recognition, I'll just share that we had the good fortune to attend one of the performances of Mary Poppins, and it happened to be the one that they did for the senior community, and the house was packed, and I can't tell you the positive feeling tone in that group to invite the senior community into our school, to see our wonderful young people do a production of that quality. They were awestruck. I spoke to many of them following the performance, and I would just like to thank Sonya and Grant and the team for putting on a production like that for our community. It was just really incredible and just wonderful to have them join us for an afternoon of seeing our young people in our community. So it was just really incredible. Well done, congrats. And our next recognition for the evening is for our 3-2-1 national champions. I'd like to invite Sue Iverson forward, and I'm just going to share a little bit, and any students who might be here for this recognition, feel free to join us here at the podium. I'll just share the following about this program and the fact that they are not Wayzata champions, or county champions, or state champions. They're national champions, and that's pretty neat. That's awesome and incredible with the work that they've done. Now, I'll share the following. Congratulations to the Wayzata High School 3-2-1 teams for their performance in the Fall National Competition, in particular, the 11th and 12th grade team, three which placed first in the nation, scoring 420 points in 91 minutes and 40 seconds. Over 175 teams from 167 schools from across the country participated in the competition. 3-2-1 is a computer-based semi-annual worldwide academic competition. During the competition, teams of students earn points by answering short-answer questions accurately. The questions come from 15 subject areas, including math, geography, and history. In addition, congratulations to the 9th and 10th grade 3-2-1 team, which placed third in the national competition. And at this time, I'll introduce Sue Iverson, who will speak further about their accomplishments. Thank you, Sue, for being here, and congrats.
Yes, thank you. Yes, it was very exciting this fall. I wish that more people could be in the room to get to watch what I watch when these kids are doing these questions, when they come up on the board. It's not, it's not speed, it's how they get points, it's their accuracy, and so how they work together to problem-solve and figure out. I wish, like I said, that all the teachers and everything could be in the room to see the results of all of the learning that has gone on in the classrooms, and how they can problem-solve and work through things together, and it's quite, quite a bit of teamwork. And we had Michael on the keyboard as well, which the first rule is never shoot the messenger, because he's the one that has to type in the answer, and if it's wrong, it's not his fault.[1763.89][1763.89](Laughter). But as you can tell by our performance, that doesn't happen very often, that these, that these kids aren't, aren't correct. So it's, I feel very honored that I just get to sit and watch all of this take place. And so tonight, we have Michael Lee and Mayor Ash Vernicker here, representing, there are about 22 kids on the team, and then our 9th and 10th grade team are right on their heels, trying to come up behind them, and they, like I said, they got third in the nation. So very proud of all of you, and thanks for being here tonight.[1792.23][1792.23](Applause).
Hey, Sue. Before you guys sit down, can I just ask a quick question? What's, what's an exam, a short answer? I mean, are these one-word, two-word answers? Are these like a paragraph? I'm just curious.
They come from all different curricular areas, but I think the ones that they kind of like the most is there will sometimes be a link to a musical piece. And there, there might be a short clue, but they'll have to figure out the composer. And so, if they get it on the first try, then they get three points. And then, the second question is, is the same answer, they try to give another clue. And so, if you get it on that one, you get two points. And if it takes you all three, you only get one point. That's why it's called three-two-one. But, it can be anything. A lot of times, it will just be a picture, and they'll have to answer some question. And these, these, they're so technical that they try to enlarge it and get clues from the, the screen. But, as they do their, but it's all problem-solving. So, they'll notice the language that is written maybe on a, on a newspaper or something in the clipping. But, it can be anything. And then, there's math questions, you name it, and there's questions. And then, there are also just pop culture-type things, too.
Can I ask a follow-up question of the students? How do you prepare for something like that? Do you just watch a lot of episodes of Jeopardy? Got it. Okay.
And it's a different, it's kind of, it feeds off of QuizBowl, because in QuizBowl, you're in a team of four, and you buzz in. And this is very much talking it through. And it took an hour and a half to do those questions. The eighty, well, it'd be two-hundred-and-forty questions, because they're tiered in threes. But, it's that teamwork, and then I think it helps support their QuizBowl.
Thanks. Congratulations, thanks.
This concludes our recognition part of the program. So, if you were here for that, now's a great time to make a graceful exit. Of course, you're always more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. But again, thank you for being here tonight, and we're glad that you could join us. Thank you.
All right. And as our, we're waiting for our, oh, look at that. So, well, we know how to think on our feet, too, right? So, Dr., I see Dr. Johnson, you are up and getting ready to go for a student curriculum presentation. So, I'll let you-
Anticipating their, the screen will be appearing shortly. Yep. So, here it is. There we go. All right, good evening. Madam Chair, welcome. Members of the Board, Superintendent Anderson, good evening. Tonight, this board meeting will be the first of many site presentations that will be provided for you this school year. Tonight, our presenters are from Kimberly Lane. I'll be introducing them shortly. But, before we start, I always like to, to share with you just how our, the work that you will see aligns to the strategic vision and mission that you have set forth for the school district. So, as you know, the strategic roadmap you are very familiar with, and this is an important document as it really guides our work. Particularly, the strategic directions, all parts of the document. But, the strategic directions are the ones that provide us with the direction for our work. From the roadmap has emerged another document that we refer to as our effective practice map, which really takes the mission, the vision, and says, here's how we tend to achieve, achieve that. And so, we've put it into areas of environment, culture, the teaching experience, the learning experience, and intervention. And tonight's presentation is going to come from an area we have not presented on before. And that is in the area of environment, which is really our learning program as it's been designed, which is that students come to a physical building to learn, that we assign students to a grade-by-age, schools in session for students a hundred-and-seventy-two days, et cetera. And so, the presentation you're going to hear tonight is about a position that you have added to our staffing, a student support worker, which is a very important position for us. And so, we thought you would be interested in hearing how that has actually evolved at the site level. So, with that, I would like to introduce to you the principal from Kimberly Lane Elementary School, Dr. Kari Worman.
Madam Chair, Dr. Anderson, and other honorable members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to share a bit about this new position. Before we begin, we are going to have, be a little bit of an experience. And so, I did bring some props. And this is something that we do for students who receive some intervention services from our student support specialist, and they get sensory breaks through the day, sensory or motor breaks. Now, my car wasn't big enough to bring all the things here as choices. So, but really, you will get a couple of choices. So, it might be easiest for you to actually stretch out your legs, and you'll be able to come over here. You'll have two choices. We have two sensory bins, and there are rice bins there. And then, we have some tutti-frutti Play-Doh. So, you'll have to choose a scent that appeals to you. So, if you are scent averse, like you just don't like, ugh, that doesn't work for you, then stay away from the Play-Doh and grab the, one of the two rice bins. So, if you could come up, I'll have these out for you. And so, feel free, if you have the Play-Doh, feel free to roll it out in your hand, grip it for the sensory bin. It's actually filled with rice. Things are hidden in it usually. You can either just run through it with your fingers, you can try to find the items that are in there. And this is something, these are tools that we use for our students. And we'll be talking about toolboxes. You also should have a slip of paper that says, "My Toolbox," on there. That's something that I'll be referring to later on in the session as well. Leslie Jones is our student support specialist, and she was going to be here today to present, unfortunately. She was taking a little bit of nosedive health-wise at the end of last week. And she gave me the email last night, she felt terrible, she wanted to come here. And I'm actually trying to showcase her work for her today. But, she was not able to make it today. And as Dr. Johnson had mentioned, one of the things that we're looking at with this position, and the reason why I wanted to share it, is because you've allocated resources toward it. And there are so many pieces of the strategic direction that we have that really link very well with this. And it has made an amazing impact on our students. And what I had pulled out was that all students feeling that sense of belonging and connection to their school, where social, emotional, physical, and mental health is nurtured and valued. Kimberly Lane is really known for being a high-performing school academically. But, as we know, that emotions are the gateway to learning. So, if we don't have those kind of underlying pieces, as what we call, like, the wheels can fall off for our student friends. And so, this has really given us a, another staff member to help us with the big picture, as well as the day-to-day proactive pieces, as well as reactive pieces. And that she actually does so much for our building. It was hard for me to narrow down, like, how am I going to put this down to a fifteen-minute presentation for you all? But, what it really boiled down to, when I kept on reflecting, is what we do is we help little people with big emotions. And with that, there are some things that we do that have just fit so well with past practices. But, having a person that's be able to take really the leadership in that, so we can be both proactive and reactive, has made a big difference. Now, the picture that we have up here of a kindergarten friend actually relates well to a tool in a curriculum that we have pulled on that is called the Zones of Regulation. And one thing that we've done at Kimberly Lane is we've made sure that this is a tier-one for all of our kindergarten and first-grade friends. So, we go into the classrooms, they all learn about these zones. And so, what you want is you want to have that perfect fit, that you're in the green zone. Because if you're in the green zone, that means that you can learn. That means that you're happy, you're content, you're feeling okay, you're focused, you're ready to learn. Now, there are times where kids, they might be in the yellow zone, they might be getting a little silly, they might be excited about something, you know, it's right before winter break, it's snowing for the first time. It could be a lot of things. There also could be kids in the red zone, where they just have really, really big emotions. And it could be because of anxiety, and they're just so, so nervous. And then, it comes out, can they push a friend? Or, it could be because they are just really angry that they didn't get what they wanted at lunch. Or, there could be even bigger, you know, problems that are more significant, that are happening at home, that carry into school. Or, they could be in the blue zone, meaning that they're sick, they're not feeling very well, they're kind of lethargic. And actually, it's okay for students to be in any of these zones. But, it's about figuring out, what are the tools that you need in your toolbox to get you so you can be in that green zone? And the thing that can be particularly hard that we found, especially once we've shifted to all-day kindergarten, and having these younger friends, where they have just a lot going on inside. And sometimes, they just know it feels icky. They don't know what it is, they don't know it's because they're nervous, or because they're angry, or whatever the emotions are, and they can't even name it yet. And that's why it's so important to have someone that's able to lead this for not just our special, because this is a tool that Special Ed has been using for quite some time. But, this is something that we're able to give as a tool for our, all of our students, to make sure that they can figure that out. And we always try to say that none of these are bad. It's just like, hey, if you're in the red zone, we need to figure out what are you, the tools that you need in order to help you, to get you to a green zone. Another thing that's really been helpful, and once again, that we already have in place, is our Second Step Program. And that's the Health Curriculum, which is absolutely fantastic. There are so many amazing resources in there. And actually, you could probably hear my name tag jingling, because one of the things I have is, are actually the two pieces on there. All of our paraprofessionals in our building have these two things on their lanyard. So, that anytime if things are happening at recess, if things are happening in the lunchroom, and there's a kid who just has, having some really big emotions, that sometimes adults, to be quite frank, can have big emotions, too. You know, when they see that, they're thinking, oh, my gosh, I need to fix this, what do I do? And so, to help people, so they're not in that reactive mode, they help, and they're right in that problem-solving mode, that they can pull this out, and they can walk through these steps with kids. And this is also something that Leslie Jones has worked hard on, is really trying to figure out, how do we blend in this really rich curriculum? Because it, when it is not one of the real core-core pieces that we do, like, a lot of our time is on reading instruction. A lot of our time is on math instruction. And this is also important, but who's the one who's going to take the helm? Who's the one who's really going to do it? And it's really this behavior intervention person. And it's a wonderful tool, and we've found, once again, data-driven-wise, we've been able to go, oh, wow, it really would be helpful to have this. And that leads to another piece that she does for us, is the timing of this position of having the student support specialist has been perfect. We are in our second year of working through the Minnesota Department of Education and getting our PBIS in order. It's a two-year grant, and we go through it, and we're in year two. And so, to have someone be able to go on in and really help us with the behavior, doing the analysis. This happens to be one slide every month at our staff meetings. We pull together the data from all the reports from the last month of what are our major behaviors, and go, wow, what is going on here? Now, is this, like, I know that one of our months, I think it was October, was a big month for our fourth graders, for some reason, and it was at recess. And so, it was really easy to go, wow, it's very visual, we've got it. And Leslie was able to bring that forward, and so, it was like, okay, so what are we going to do? Well, we're going to make sure that then Leslie is out at recess during fourth grade. We're going to do some additional lessons in fourth grade, we're going to reteach the expectations on the hill. We're going to change some of the expectations, so it's clear, we're going to do a different lineup for kids. And so, it's really been great having someone, once again, who is dedicated to this and is able to really go dive into the data. And she is absolutely amazing at, you know, putting together data and sharing it with staff in a way that really makes some sense. As I mentioned, you know, this does link to the other response to intervention pieces that we have in place. We have this for reading, we have this already in place for math. And so, to have something that is clear and have an intervention specialist on our staff that helps us specifically with behavior is really, really helpful. Once again, she helps us with those tier ones and figuring out, okay, what are we all going to get? And she's a key member of our PBIS team. And so, to help, you know, what are those messages? What are the books that we should be reading? And working through that, and then also figuring out, helping the capacity of our students with tier-two and tier-one, or tier-three, so if they need something more customized. And really, that leads to that slip of paper that you have on your desk that has that toolbox. That is something that is individualized to students. So, once we run all the data, and we look, and we go, wow, here's a kid who's had three majors this month. We need to step in, because the reteaching is not enough. So, we come up with a plan, individualized to this child, and help them work through it. And so, for instance, a, a good example of this would be, we have, and most of the students that we kind of work with tend to be primary grades, but I will share a fourth-grade example and fifth-grade example as well. But, a lot of the times, it's, you know, wow, there's this kid, and then we've, look at the data, and we go, oh, it's always happening between twelve-thirty and one-thirty. Huh, that's great. Now, we know that that's exactly when we need to insert ourselves in, twenty minutes before that. You know, to go, oh, we'll go in and then really kind of do some detective work. Right now, you know, you have the Play-Doh, you're working with it. And for, many times, we, that's something that they come in, and they get to have their, their break box. And so, it figures out, well, what is the thing that works out well for that child? And a lot of times, just even having the choice of, wow, I got to pick strawberry over orange, and I love strawberries, and that brings me good memories. And then, they have this positive experience, and then they get to do something physically with their hands, and then talking through the zones. And that's what they do. And on the sheets that you have, everyone has theirs individualized, and they figure out, what is my toolbox? Because my toolbox is going to be different than your toolbox, just as adults. We have different ways, some people go running, some people do yoga, some people want to talk it out. They need to figure out, what are the pieces, what are the tools that they need in order to self-reflect to be their best self? There are other students that we end up having, that they come in in fourth grade, and their check-in, and their breaks are different, because they can handle things differently, because they're older. And so, and they also, we use the one-to-one iPads in fourth to fifth grade, so they have an end-of-the-day checkout, where they are self-assessing where they are and how their day went. And it automatically goes into a Google form, and then we're able to track data that way. And that's super helpful information for, not only for us to help students, help teachers, but then to partner with home and share, wow, this is a way to, because sometimes, they, they hold it together at school, and then it falls apart at home, right? And then, and it's because, wow, they're more comfortable with mom and dad, and they can, they just kind of, ugh, let it all go. But, then we can share, but this is the data at school, you know? That they actually reported that they were doing great in science and in math, and it was really just in language arts, that was the time that they were really struggling. And that was it, it wasn't the whole day was horrible. It wasn't the whole day was horrible because that's what they heard at the dinner table. So it's just been a really great opportunity. The other thing that we do is, once we have the data, we try to figure out which one of these umbrella behaviors is the piece that is really, that the child's struggling with and then figuring out what's the toolbox to help them improve. Most of the ones that obviously go to the kind of top of our concern would be the safety concern pieces, especially of that physical aggression and that verbal aggression. But the other ones are equally important that can make it tough for kids to be as successful as they can be and be their best selves. As I mentioned, every kid, when they get to that tier two and that tier three, we come up with what's the, what's their right toolbox? And that toolbox might change from fall to, you know, they're different in the spring. And so coming up with different pieces, this is an actual one where the kid has chosen, these are the things that work for me. And the first couple of times they might come in and they might try things, they might try things, they might try things, and that didn't work, that didn't work, that didn't work, but this is it. And then we also have places actually throughout our building where we have these sensory motor brakes built in where kids can do almost like a Where's Waldo on the wall, and that helps focus them in. They can do wall push-ups, they've got a yoga piece, they've got all these different pieces and it's throughout the building. So the kids don't have to walk all the way down to her office to take that break, it's strategically placed in certain parts of the building and it just looks like artwork, like people would just walk right by it and they don't realize it, that that's an important break spot. As I mentioned, emotions are the gateway to learning. And I really want to sincerely thank you for this position because it's really allowed us to build a brighter future for our students. And it really has opened doors for them to learning and not only that, but to, for their peers. Because if there's a dysregulated student in the classroom, it's not affecting just that one child. You know, there's a lot of other pieces that are going on. And it's not just great for them on that school day. There's been some statistics that show, this was a great infographic that I saw from Dr. Bradbury about, you know, really this emotional intelligence and knowing yourself and how it, there are just so many benefits longer term for this of people who are 90% of high performers have high EQ, that EQ is responsible for 58% of your job performance. And then you actually, many times, they earn more money from that. But the most important piece is that really that they're able to feel a sense of longing.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Meriman. What a fantastic presentation. I will now open it up to some questions and comments. Andrea.
I'm so excited to hear about how effective this position is at Kimberly Lane. It sounds like you're doing so many great things. I'm curious about how it's changed your job. Because I'm assuming a lot of this probably fell on you before this position existed. So now that you have a little bit more, well, I wouldn't say freedom, maybe a little more time, or what are you focusing on that you couldn't focus on before?
Well, it has allowed me, I think it's allowed me richer partnerships with teachers because there's some of the crisis management that has been moved on to Leslie's plate, to be quite honest. With having so many new staff members, I hired 19 new people last year, and so that's really been helpful. So I've been able to do observations of new paraprofessionals, of the new teachers, things like that, just because we've grown so much over the last chunk of time, so that's been really helpful. I think what it has done is it's just really helped me have another partner in the work for the strategic work of helping kids. We have, and be able to think through systems of how to get things done. For instance, if there's any teacher who's needing additional support because a child needs a break in their classroom or they're, you know, they're just, they just need support, they just call our mainline and then we automatically get a text message. So the social worker, the student support specialist and I, we get a text message. One of us says, got it. And then we go to wherever that happens to be. Also, when we have Google Forms and teachers share, like, that there was a major that happened during whatever, the social worker, the, the student support specialist and I get a ping as an email that we automatically know what that is and we can access it to know, is this something that we need to take care of in the next, you know, five, 10 minutes? Or is this something that, okay, we can deal with this this afternoon? So really, it's just been great to have more of a team effect to go through it. I don't think that it's necessarily, it's been nice to spread the wealth a little bit, but it's just been really great to have more of a team. Because when all of a sudden, if the social worker is gone, then it's the Kari Show. That's the way it was last year. And this way, it's like you just have more contingency plans to help the students and really to help the whole school community.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment. Thank you very much for letting us know about this because we don't always know everything that goes on in the district. I know that may come as a surprise, but it's great to know that with the hiring of this particular new position in the different elementaries, how it's made a meaningful impact for the students. So it's great to hear about it. Thanks.
Good. Thank you.
More questions? Well, I should ask, how do we get your treats back to you?
Yeah, I will walk and I will collect the Play-Doh and the sensory bins, I'll just walk the aisle. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. It's fun to have little things to play with. We like these breaks.
Thank you.
Again. Well, it's always good to hear how our decisions are played out in the building. So thank you. And next, we have our superintendent reports and recommendations, and there's one underneath that, and that's to you, Mr. Westrom.
Yes, congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And members of the School Board. This evening, we have one item, the monthly financial reports. And enclosed in your board packets are the following financial reports as of November 2017. The Student Activity Fund Report, the Investment Summary Report, and Analysis of the Financial Reports, Statement of Revenues, and a Statement of Expenditures. And I would like to share that the Finance Committee of the Board met this afternoon and the Business Office has reviewed these reports and everything would appear reasonable and that we're on schedule for staying within our current budget, budgetary parameters. So at the next board meeting on July 30, or July, January 31, I don't want to move ahead that fast, but our next meeting on January 31, we'll actually ask the Board to reauthorize carryover dollars that weren't expended the year before and adjust some of our federal grants to the actual awarded amounts. So with that, no School Board action is required, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westrom. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and now we move on to the ninth item on our agenda, which is Other Board Action. And we seem to have a lot of Other Board Action tonight. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the 2018 Legislative Platform. Wayzata Public Schools has a citizen-led legislative action committee that works each year to advocate for our district during the legislative session. The items in the platform are developed in collaboration with the district administration as well as in conjunction with other area organizations such as the Association of Metropolitan School Districts and the Minnesota School Board Association. Those following our School Board agendas will note that Estrada, the Citizen Chair of the LAC, came to present a draft platform at our December 18 work session. At that time, board members were actively engaged in learning more about the process that went into the creation of the platform. Before you tonight is the final version, which incorporates the feedback from our work session. So the recommended action is to approve the Legislative Action Committee platform for 2018. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
All right, moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and sectioned, seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd love to make some comments if I could. I am the Board Representative for the Legislative Action Committee, and it's my pleasure to bring this year's platform to the Board. It really is, as Sarah said, a team effort to create the platform. And on behalf of the LAC, I want to thank all of the district stakeholders for answering all of our questions, visiting our meetings, and contributing to this, this final product. I also want to thank Estrada, our Citizen Chair. As Sarah mentioned, she came to our work session in December and we got lots of great feedback from the Board. And so I hope you can see that that feedback is reflected in this final draft of the platform. I'll give you just a quick summary of the platform. We always start out in the first section thanking all of our legislators for the hard work they did to support public education during the 2017 session. So that's the beginning. And then we have two main sections in the platform, really the meat of the platform, the sections are our main priorities and action items. So under our main priorities, we have to include, to develop a plan to fully fund special education, to stabilize the Teachers Retirement Association Fund, and to provide consistent per pupil formula allowances. Then under the action item section, we have to support college and career readiness for all students, to increase access and funding for high-quality early learning programs, to support healthy and safe students, to fund technology, and last, to support local control. This year, the legislative session begins on Tuesday, February 20. It is a non-funding year. The LAC looks forward to sharing Wayzata's platform with the community and with our legislators and most of all advocating for what's best for our kids. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the platform if there are any questions about the edits.
All right. Any additional questions? Chair?
Yes.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment that when I read through the final version, I thought it was really well-done. It's well-written, it's concise, and it really hits all of the main points that we always talk about as being the priorities for the district and for, you know, it goes well with our other districts that we work with. And so just kudos to everybody's hard work. It really turned out nice, I think.
All right, well, in closing, I just want to thank, take this opportunity to thank Ms. Keen and Ms. Polzin, who are both the Board Liaisons to the Committee. The LAC meets monthly, and it's a lot of work that goes into learning more about the issues and the impacts on our district. So, and I too, on behalf of the Board, would like to thank the LAC members, which is made up of most of all of our buildings and the community at large, for their commitment in helping to develop the platform, as well as a thank you in advance for the outreach and advocacy that will be happening during the session. So barring any further discussion, I think that we don't need a roll call. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Okay, and keeping with our legislative theme, the next two items on our agenda are Resolutions Regarding the Special Education Cross-Subsidy. If I can take a moment to give some context. The first is a resolution to fully fund special education services in the state of Minnesota. The Wayzata Public Schools District places a very high priority on ensuring that all students receive high-quality special education programs and instruction. However, the Fed, in 1975, Congress enacted the Individuals with Disabilities Act, or IDEA, to improve access to education for children with disabilities, to protect their educational rights, to offer funding assistance to the school systems that provide educational services to students with special needs, and to assess the effectiveness of special services programming. When IDEA became law in 1975, the federal government promised to fund 40% of the additional cost of educating children with disabilities. However, the federal government has never provided more than 15% of the additional cost. This essential funding would significantly enhance a school district's ability to provide an excellent education for all students. Currently, the unfunded portions of funding expended for special services is covered by the local school district. These unfunded mandates for special services, the Special Education Cross-Subsidy, as it is called, continue to create a challenge for school districts, given the increasing number of students with special needs, the increasing complexity of their special needs, and the rising costs of providing special services. In addition to the federal government's shortcomings to fund their self-imposed obligations for special education funding, the state's special education funding system has also not kept pace with the rising cost of mandated services. This cross-subsidy for Minnesota school districts in fiscal year 2016 was 679 million, which represented a 5.6 increase from fiscal year 2015. Taking action on this resolution is an effort to urge the Governor and the Legislature to advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels. This resolution is further intended to urge the Minnesota Legislature to convene a task force to work on special education funding with a resulting timeline to eliminate the Special Education Cross-Subsidy. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution to fully fund special education services or to, in the state of Minnesota. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I so move.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Okay, well, if I can make a couple of comments. These two resolutions are intended to encourage both the federal and state governments in their respective capacities to better support public education with regard to special education funding. As was intended when lawmakers voted for and passed bills dating back to the mid 1970s, they've failed to fulfill their financial commitment that will enable schools to fulfill the mission envisioned when these bills were first passed. It is the hope of MSBA and many, if not all, school districts throughout the state that a unanimous and official request to alleviate this increasing shortfall in funding will move lawmakers to act before the situation becomes critical. And so when we had delegate assembly for MSBA, we talked about how every school district would try and pass resolutions to this effect, to try and get our state and federal legislators to understand how critical this is. And part of the resolution for the state lawmakers is to ask them to please convene a task force that will look at the entire problem and how this funding shortfall is truly affecting all school districts across the state. And so hopefully, with the passing of these resolutions, we in Wayzata are doing our part to work together with all school districts across the state to try and shine a light on this issue. So I don't, if anybody has any questions, I can try and answer or any other comments?
Okay, and I, and I can also speak for our colleagues to say that we discussed this as well at the December work session, and it's been discussed in our Teaching and Learning Committee and with our, the Director of Special Education. And so this isn't, when we do something important like a resolution like this, it's not, this isn't the first time that we've seen it, and there have been a time for conversation. So, but it is important and it is also a roll call vote?
It is.
And I can say that the recommended action, again, just a reminder, is to adopt the resolution to urge the state of Minnesota to fully fund special education services. Okay, Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown.
Yes.
And Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Passes. Right, passes. So then our second, as we alluded to along the way, is the resolution to fully fund, is to urge the federal government to fully fund special education services. So the recommended action is to adopt the resolution to urge the federal government to fully fund special education services. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move.
Moved.
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional conversation beyond what we just had? Okay, it's another roll call vote. Okay, Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
And Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
All right, both pass. Thank you very much. Okay, and still sticking with lots of items under Other Board Action. The next is a review of our committee structure. And at the December 4, 2017 School Board Special Organizational Work Session, the School Board reviewed its committee structure. Individual board members indicated their interest in a tentative list of committee assignments for 2018 is attached for School Board approval. The recommended action is to approve the proposed School Board Committee assignments for 2018 as presented. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Moved by Linda.
Second.
Seconded by Eric. All right, any discussion?
Well, I would like to share, and bear with me, as our viewing audience knows and as all of you know, a lot of the work that we as board members do happens within our committee structures and committees meet quite regularly. And really, it's our chance to connect with the administration and, and other people in the district to get the work done. So I think it's important for those who are following our meetings and watching our meetings to have some idea of what these committees are and, and who is chair-
to have some idea of what these committees are and, and who is chairing them. So I will read for you our standing committees for 2018 and who is chair. The first is Finance and Business, and Eric Brown, our Treasurer, will be the committee chair. The next is Human Resources and Superintendent Evaluation and Compensation Committee, and Bonita Lucky is our chair. Our third is Teaching and Learning, and Linda Cohen is our chair. Next is Stakeholder Relations, and Andrea Keen is the committee chair. Facilities Development and Long Range Planning, and Cheryl Polzin is our committee chair. Policy and Regulation Review, Linda Cohen is our committee chair. And we have a new committee this year, it's an ad hoc committee, a one-year assignment. The specific task and mission will be developed at the first meeting, but it was assembled around looking at our strategic roadmap and, and our progress towards the strategic directions. And Chris McCullough is our chair. We also have, in 2018, we will be engaging in a number of negotiation sessions with some of our very important employment groups, so I will share that as well. For custodians, Eric Brown will represent the Board. For secretaries and paraprofessionals, Chris McCullough will represent the Board. For food service professionals, Cheryl Polzin will represent the Board. And among our principals group, Andrea Keen will represent the Board. So, given that, if there's no additional discussion, all those in favor of approving the proposed school board appoint, committee assignments for 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. No. Abstentions? The motion carries, we've got some work to do, colleagues. But, not quite yet, so we also have our committee appointments and in our community appointments. So also, at the December 4th, 2017 School Board Special Organizational Work Session, the school board reviewed the school board member community appointments that were made to community and professional organizations. Again, individual school board members indicated their interest, and a tentative list of appointments for 2018 is attached for school board review. The recommended action is to approve the school board appointments for 2018 as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All right, any discussion? All right, well, again, we get around a lot, we're not just in the district. And so I also think that the community, as you're seeing us out and about, may want to know what we're doing and who we're connecting with. So bear with me as I read these. To the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, otherwise known as AMSD, Cheryl Polzin is our liaison. To the Caring for Kids Initiative and the Great Expectations Project through Interfaith Outreach, I, Sarah Johansson, is the board, am the board liaison. For the Citizens Financial Advisory Council, otherwise known as CFAC, Eric Brown, our Treasurer, is the liaison. For the Community Education Advisory Council, Chris McCullough is our liaison. For the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Advisory Committee, otherwise known as SITAC, Andrea Keen is our liaison. For the District Liaison Committee, which is made of representatives from each of the buildings, and they meet almost monthly, we have a board rotation. So we all take time to go and spend time with that committee. For intermediate, District 287, Andrea Keen is our board representative. For the Legislative Action Committee, as we noted, Andrea Keen is our board representative. For the Minnesota School Board Association, or MSBA, Cheryl Polzin. For the Minnesota State High School League, or MSHSL, Eric Brown is our representative. For Partners for Healthy Kids, Andrea Keen is our board representative. For Partners in Prevention, I, Sarah Johansson, am the board representative. For our Q-COMP Committee, Linda Cohen is our liaison. For the West Metro Education Program, otherwise known as WMEP, I am the board liaison, Sarah Johansson. For the Wayzata Education Fund, Eric Brown is our connection. And for the Agenda Planning Meetings, which happen before board meetings and work sessions, Andrea Keen and I and a rotating board member attend those meetings. Any, so, any other, bearing any other discussion? There's a motion on the table to approve the proposed community appointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions? The motion carries. All right, we're doing it, guys, almost there. Are there any other board reports this evening?
I don't have a full report, but I did want to just announce about the MSBA Leadership Conference that's coming up this week. And I believe that all or most of us, most or all of us, will be attending in some capacity. So it's a, a two-day conference that provides us with workshops and keynote speakers so that we can get some professional development ourselves. And just for the viewing public, it is, our registration is free because the MSBA feels it's very important for all school board members to be able to attend that. And so they have a lot of sponsors and a lot of tradespeople that have booths and whatnot, and they raise the money to put this on without having to charge us a registration fee. So I think that's a very special thing, we'd like to thank MSBA for that. And I look forward to seeing everybody there this, this week later.
All right, thank you. Any other board reports? I have just one announcement. Contained within tonight's consent agenda was the finalized calendar for all of our 2018 school board regular meetings and work sessions. There are a few deviations from our regular second and fourth Monday schedule. All meetings will be posted, but I will just let our viewing audience know that specifically this month, our January work session has been moved from its traditional date of Monday, January 22nd to Wednesday, January 31st. And it'll be four o'clock at the District Administration Building. Okay, so, closing that, next there's an audience opportunity to address the Board. Is there anyone here that would like to address the Board? Okay, all right. So that leads us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second.
All right. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for January 8th, 2018 is adjourned.